I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please listen to this?
Sure.
I want to please follow your head.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the beautiful day you gave us today. We pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that they may be pleasing to you and to us and all that we do in our lives. In your name we pray.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, uh, greeting approval of minutes from the June twenty-first meeting, please.
Motion to approve and suspend.
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of these minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approve the agenda. Any changes, additions, corrections?
There's my one addition at six B. Do you have a permit?
Six B, the permit for the Raffle, okay.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Pillar. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. All right. Five A. Engineers' report. Mark, do you need to...
Nobody got back to me, so I didn't have Jared arrange anybody to be on the call. So, we saw his little note there that he really has nothing. He did send out some requests for quotes for that asphalt work. He hasn't obviously gotten anything back yet. He'll keep in touch with us on that.
Okay. Anything, anybody? Any questions for Marky that he can use to bring up Jared? All right. Alley concern updates. Let's see. Pat, do you have any... Raise the speed of that a little bit, what you've been doing since digging, it looks like. Back to nineteen forty-six.
Well, I've followed the records that I've been provided, and based on those records, I should have a hand, and I could show you, but anyway, what happened is, the original plot was vacated by the owner who had all the property. He vacated only lots, certain specific lots. He did not vacate public alley. The public alley has never been vacated as such. But after the plot was vacated, a deed was drawn that rather than referring to what you would typically use as the lot and block number, you know, lots three through six and block five, the deed began with a description from a corner of an adjacent block, and then went down ten feet too far. The lots were a hundred and forty feet long, the deed went a hundred and fifty feet, so it included ten feet of the alley. That was the deed in nineteen forty-six that you're referring to. And ever since that time, that legal description has off and on been used to convey that property. So it leads the owner to believe that, and rightfully so, that, you know, they get a deed that says that it's got a hundred and fifty feet, and yet that ten feet of the alley was never vacated. So what this means to the city is that if you so choose, we could initiate a quiet title action to that ten feet of the alley that has never been vacated, but has been claimed through documents of record as being owned by the owners of those lots up above. And this would be largely a paper proceeding. There's nobody living who could testify as to what the intents were, the parties, the deed that's created in nineteen forty-six. There's no lawyers left who created that deed. So basically, it would be up to a judge to rule as to whether or not that property was ever vacated or rightfully conveyed to the owner that now claims that that's his property. In terms of cost, I'd say, I think it would require a survey because of the lots, I mean, this legal description begins with a reference to a corner of a certain spot, you have about a certain number of feet and so on. And even though there may still be some old pins in there, I think that it would be best to have a survey for purposes of a court proceeding if you did that. So you'd probably be looking at, I'd guess, anywhere from five to eight thousand dollars in cost. And the party that has the most to gain from this process is the complaint party, and I'm not certain what their position is, if they would be willing to either fund that entire process or a portion of it.
On the previous slide, it had highlighted notation there that said that the landowner would accept the fact, right there it says grantees understand and accept that the south ten feet of the conveyed property may be subject to public use as an alley.
Yeah.
And that, to me, seems like the biggest part of the complaint, is that it's being held hostage, basically, to prevent people from utilizing it.
Well, without doubt, they have noticed that that was a possibility, but it's phrased as possibility, probably because of the confusion from that original deed.
What is the age of that statement there? Is that on the current deed of...
It does, that language is on the current owner's deed.
Yeah, this is the current owner's deed.
Yes. Yes. They are aware.
Yeah. I don't know, I guess, to me, the city doesn't have a horse in the race, so to speak, does it?
Uh, well, I have a voice that's in the pen, and that, I mean, as long as you still have access for your purposes, you don't necessarily require that additional ten feet. It's a matter of, does somebody want to clear up the record at some point?
Yeah.
I think the only one who has a claim is the city, because it's a public alley.
Got it. Okay.
So, well, except for the other party, they could do the same thing. They could initiate quiet title action, and then we'd be a defendant, and we'd be able to show our side of the story.
I would like to see it happen, but I don't. I think it's a five to eight thousand dollars, which is not worth our efforts, even though it would be nice to not have to have this come up next time, where I have a different landowner that lives along that alley, and then they're battling with the same guy, and it happens again, and then we have a new person that buys his home, and now do they think that they have that ten feet as well? Or it'd be really, really nice to get it cleaned up, but not for that amount of money. And maybe we need to approach Nelson's and see if they would be willing to fund that, or...
Well, and Nelson's aren't the only ones affected, are they, the other?
Nelson's are the only ones that are having issue with this garage, and the way he comes in with his camper. Well, the only one that's...
Claimed, but if you ask the adjoining neighbors, maybe they'd all be together and fund it, or that's his problem, but, you know, something to probably look at, if they want to fix the situation, or...
I guess, just putting myself into a landowner's position on that street, I wouldn't want to be paying money for somebody else that made an error back in nineteen forty-something. It just doesn't seem logical to me.
So is there...
Go ahead.
So is there, do they have a timeframe? You know, I mean, no, but the owners have been, I guess, maintaining that for, I mean, twenty, thirty years, claiming it as theirs, you know? I mean, might be kind of...
Not necessarily. You've seen the language. They were warned that it may not be theirs.
So what kind of teeth does that paragraph have in real life?
I'm not the judge. It, you know, it's a fracture. There's no doubt it puts them on notice. That's a fact.
But with that kind of language, who stipulates, then, if it says, "This may happen, be alert, this may happen," and it would be considered a public alleyway?
Where'd that come from?
No, no, no. Who goes to that landowner and says, "Hey, it clearly stipulates in here that it may be required as a public alleyway, and we're going to tell you it is going to be used for that, so don't park your vehicles," or whatever there? I mean, that's where I'm curious, what kind of teeth that has, and then who actually takes the bite and makes that, or gives them notice and says, "It says here clearly in your docket that you need to accept and understand that this may be subject to public use as an alley."
Maybe subject to use.
So if a neighbor or somebody else, or a fire truck or anything comes down that alley, that's the maybe, isn't it? And then they would have to be cleared?
Yeah, I mean, anybody who wants to, anybody from the public who wants to use the alley. But that serves as a public notice, so it's really up to, but the city is the trustee of all alleys and streets and so on, so, you know, you guys are the ones that...
Well, I know in other situations where cars have been parked in alleyways and things like that, we've talked to the property owners and stuff like that, and got things moved out of there, towed out of there, and different things like that, so that we could have access for garbage drops and things like that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Over the years, yeah. So then it would, I'm guessing then it's the city that might make a call to this landowner?
Send a letter, yeah.
Or send a letter?
You can.
Maybe not doing good, I guess.
I guess I'm not smart enough to understand what the purpose of a statement like that is, if there's so much ambiguity with it is, who's got responsibility and who can enforce it, and...
Well, I think it was, I just have to guess, because it's done a long time ago.
Sure.
I'm assuming that the lawyers who look at the abstracts of the property say, "Uh-oh, we see a possible problem here, so let's put some language in."
So we'll spend five dollars and put this paragraph in instead of eight thousand dollars?
Well, yeah, I would guess that people who receive this deed don't feel like they want to spend the money either.
No, no.
So who's left?
Yes, I agree, it's something that probably should be fixed. I mean, it's not going to go away. Who spends the money?
I feel like it's partly your responsibility...
I agree.
...to get it cleaned up, but I think contact Nelson's to see if they are willing to invest in this, but they're the only ones that are having a heartburn. You know, I drove through their Friday, and there was, a fire truck could have got through there easily, so, you know, it's just, it comes and goes, but I don't know.
And yesterday, there was a sign on there that said private drive, so...
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's something that needs to be fixed, because it's not going to go away. I agree, I think we should talk to Nelson's and see how much they're willing to invest and take care of this problem.
Marky, will you get hold of this, please?
Yeah, I'll get a hold of it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Pat? Okay. Let's move on. Notice six A, purchase of city property. Capital Credit Union wants to do an addition on their building across the street. Marky, what do you think?
I was contacted by Keith Matts at Capital Credit Union. They're looking to add eight hundred and sixty-two square feet of additional space onto their building. Mr. Link found all the pins, or the majority of the pins, and then created this drawing. If they squared up that property on the east side of their building where they want to add on, they would be looking at purchasing seventeen hundred and eighty-two square feet, I believe. So based on even our assess, assessment of commercial land at two dollars and fifty-three cents a square foot, it would exceed the twenty-five hundred dollar limit, and we'd have to publish it. And they are definitely interested in purchasing it, so I told Keith we would discuss it tonight, and if they, if you want, I will work with Pat and come up with a publication that this is being sold, and we'll get it out there.
I know you said that there's a value on it per square foot, but is there, do we set the value we want to set of it, or does that...
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. But just thinking as a memo, that we would be looking at a two sixty-three per square foot.
How many parking spots would we possibly lose over there?
Three, four of them on the front. Did it, I don't remember, Ken, did it go all the way to the...
Far east?
There would be four of them, it would be right by that handicap parking spot.
So it's not terrible.
Put it out to bid, are you obligated to sell it now?
You can deny, decline all, anything.
And I don't know if you, that was my question for Pat. Are we actually putting it out for bid, since we have a purchaser that's willing, or do we just advertise that it's being sold?
I think the way your ordinance says, you have to put it up for bid.
Okay. And that's why I asked the question, you know, we've got some people in town that like to buy. Anyway, it would just seem kind of odd, and it wouldn't seem reasonable that somebody else would bid on a little strip of land there next to a bank.
Stranger things happen.
I could say that's why I was, you might hang up out this...
So it almost locked, then? It's all, I guess, part of our, part of our, I guess...
It's our land, yeah. Yeah, they basically own the footprint of their building in that little bit, they own that little triangle, and then the little bit south of their building. Everything else is all city property.
Right. It's all pavement, so, I mean, I would think that would, what I mean, raise up the price of selling, you know, it's already...
Except they're going to tear it out to build, I don't think so.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I mean, if we had to pay for it, I don't know.
Yeah, as far as price, that would be up to you guys, unless it's purely bid.
I guess I don't have any major heartburn about this.
I don't either.
Selling a piece of that business expansion.
Okay. Well, I just say I'll work with Pat, so that we get it published properly, and we'll put it out there.
In the meantime, how do we come up with a value?
Well, if it's bid, it's going to be whether you accept what they...
But we can set minimum.
You could set a minimum, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right, something to consider.
And that's, I would say, that may be something you want to consider, because we'll have to put that in the notice as well.
Okay.
If you want to get that notice out soon, you may want to make that decision tonight.
What's your timeline?
Yeah, did they say when they wanted to construction?
They really didn't have. They still wanted to try and do construction this fall, if at all possible.
Okay. I mean, do you say minimum bid of ten thousand dollars? I don't know where you start.
You dropped the line, dude.
Pat, I mean...
I'm not even crazy, but Marky's given you kind of the square footage, well, he's given you the square footage and the, among the city assessments for the land.
Right.
And that might be your minimum bid. I wouldn't, I don't feel like going any higher than that.
Well, I would think, you know, as you said, I mean, I think that would be like a fair, I guess, right, a starting price, anyway. Well, it might, it might then also...
Three and a quarter is worth what I needed, so...
Might also deter anybody else from saying, "I'll put a bid on this chunk of property and give it for two thousand dollars."
Yeah.
And then negotiate with the bank.
And then negotiate with the bank and sell for ten.
Yeah. So Dan, will they come up with five thousand?
Maybe you have to see the boxes.
Well, it is commercial property. It's commercial property.
How many square feet?
Do you think it would be higher valued more than if it was private property?
Well, I think what Marky has is different.
Two sixty-three is what we have for assessment.
Great. So I said three, that gives us fifty-three, forty-six.
Sure. It would motion by Pillar to set the minimum bid fifty, five hundred dollars. I'd just round it to forty.
Second.
Second, hi, Wolf. Discussion. Roll call.
All right. Wolf.
Aye.
Stern?
All right.
Okay. Six B, local permit for the Fire and Iron Motorcycle Station One Sixty-Two. All right.
Basically, the conductor raffle, July thirty-first of this year, part of their motorcycle run or something.
What can you guys tell us?
Well, for you guys, those of you that know what we are, my name is Sean Squizzy Chealy, I'm president of Fire and Iron Station One Six Two. Adam Seiler, Sergeant at Arms Station One Six Two. And what Fire and Iron Motorcycle Club is, is we're a group of paid volunteer and retired firefighters and EMS that do charity runs and raise money for people in need. And this year, we are doing a charity run for the Olsen family out of Ullrich. And basically, that's kind of what we do. We're an international club, there's actually five stations in North Dakota, one here, Bismarck, Wapperton, Williston, and Dulles. So that's kind of the gist of it.
Wolf. Any questions of us?
I'll make motion to accept the charity raffle.
Okay, motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good luck, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Seven A, fireworks ordinance. Okay, so first of all, I want to thank our fire department and our police officers for putting out a few fires over the last few days, and I got firsthand viewing from my brother's deck of his house of the fire behind Cornerstone Church, and was very impressed by the time that, it was ten minutes maybe that it took those guys to get over there and put it out. It took about a minute to put it out, but it was a fire that could have spread, and I think they did an awesome job taking care of that stuff. I talked to Corey Geary and Matt the day after, and Corey was pretty happy with the way things went. He said, "There's fires every year with fireworks trying to happen," but this year was a little bit different, and they were on their toes, and we're lucky we have a volunteer partner with the ones that we do. So that being said, we've had plenty of time to digest this ordinance, to look at what other people are doing, and to move forward here one way or the other, whatever the board wishes to do. So is there any thoughts, any discussion, or...
I like the one that Marky put out where it discusses if the fourth falls on a Sunday or Monday, Tuesday, you know, he went through the days of the week, so that you do have a weekend in each and every one of them, instead of, it's exact, almost like Beulah's, except for he didn't name the years.
It's perpetual.
Right, it's perpetual. You never have to fix it. I do like that one. And I'd like to see it go down to four days. Of course, the sale is still going to stay for whatever it is, a seven or nine days, from the twenty-seventh to the fifth.
To sell.
To sell.
Yeah.
But discharging, I think, what I've heard from people is they'd like it to be less.
Is that a motion?
That would be a motion. I'll put that in a motion.
Okay, motion by Wolf to reduce the days to four, including the description Marky had of the timeline, how it falls on the days of the week.
I'll second that.
Second by Pillar. Discussion.
I spent a fair amount of times since we started this discussion, just reaching out to, I'll say, random people, and I got a fair amount of feedback. I also, you know, had heard other discussions, but when I say I got a fair amount of feedback, I got a whole gamut of different things in there. Quite a few shift work folks, they had a little bit more heartburn with it being so spread out, because they said it's not so much necessarily the number of days. They said if people actually stopped at eleven o'clock, like our ordinance says, then it would be more manageable. So they said, "But because people can't tell time," is the way they worded it, "and you now have nine days of not being able to tell time, it became more problematic for those folks." I have to say that, sitting out on my porch watching the fireworks, I could hear some of the neighbors' dogs that were really struggling with it as well, so I, you know, I'm not a pet owner myself, but I can empathize with people that have to worry about the health of their animals and stuff like that. So I heard it like that, and then I did hear the comments like, you know, "If I don't like something else in town, if I come to a city commission meeting, are you going to change an ordinance for me?" And I guess my response to those type of statements, that it was in a conversation very similar to what we corresponded on, was, "If you come to a city meeting and you tell us something that is bothersome to you, as a representative of citizens within, you know, town, we're going to consider that, and we may or may not act on it just based on the feedback of an individual, or, you know, we may ask to have something put together where they get a bunch of signatures or something like that." So I did spend a lot of time, and what I found is that, albeit we only have one person come to the meeting and voice concerns, there's a lot of people that walk the streets of our town that do have some concerns with a longer period of time. And they thought, what I heard a couple of times was, "Well, what do other towns do?" And I said, "Well, funny..." And I said, well, funny you should ask, because that was part of, you know, the discussion is seeing what other towns do. And if we do something like this, it would be in alignment with the town that's most immediately close to us. That's my two cents.
I was very proud of our community at midnight on the fourth. It was almost like they took the light switch and shut it off, and it was done at midnight. That was, they could tell time that night then, but you're right.
I wasn't up that late.
I was fired to place about eleven fourteen, fifteen. Anyhow, and I talked to quite a few people as well. Actually, I talked to a couple. They're both seventy-nine years old. They enjoy the fireworks. And they said, they can't hear. The hearing hits other, can't hear him. But anyhow, so I heard a mixed emotions of things as well. But a lot of people, like I said, wanna know what other towns do, so it was, it was good.
Casey, I've heard the comment, you know, above. When the guys that then have to work, you know, on that period, from the first, first, I mean, through the fourth, you know, and I guess like they don't ever then, you know, I guess like they don't ever get to, I guess, I guess enjoy it then, you know, that's why they do it prior. And then two, you know, you know, as we noticed, you know, in the wind, you know, you know, it then started to blow on the first and then blew for almost four days straight, you know.
And it's gonna be hard to please absolutely everybody. And don't get me wrong, I talked to a lot of people. It's not my opinion. I don't care. I fell asleep and our neighborhood was exploding. And I fell asleep. It doesn't bother me. But I talked to a lot of people. That's where I get my opinions from is, I talk to all different ages and groups and, you know, and they work too. And it's, you know, pleasing everybody's gonna be impossible. So, you gotta go with the majority and hope it works out.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
Moving on.
Aye. Motion to carry.
This is just the first reading, so we'll be having again pretty much meetings as well.
Great, thank you. Eight A condemnation of three ten Fourth Avenue Northwest.
As you know, remember, we started this process quite some time ago when we had scheduled the first hearing. There is still question as to the exact ownership of this building, but at the time it was occupied. So I guess, I think we should keep pursuing this. I'll try to get some more information from the court regarding the estate and who actually owns this property. And we'll just schedule a hearing and keep moving forward.
Is there still somebody in it?
No, it is not currently on.
Alright, thank you.
It'll probably be the first meeting in August.
Okay. Alright. Nine A water sewer.
Nothing reported this time.
Streets Dave, these are what you made from the town.
Yeah, I've already everything trimmed up, cleaned up for the celebration coming up. Then I gave Monty some paperwork, showed it to Jason. In the past, we've been selling our recycle pile out there. We wait a payload or bucket. That's how we sell, by the payload or bucket or kind. You have a couple outfits. Inquire why we don't put an onboard monitor system where you can weigh your bucket, print tickets right on site. Know exactly how much you're selling, instead of guessing or whatever. Monty has some paperwork and some pricing.
That's the fishing-
That's the depth finder.
Depth finder?
So is it the sum of those three prices on there, assuming you want to-
You could do a little doctor printer, just do your handwritten, or you could often have, actually have a printed ticket. Printers could always be added later. I guess it depends on how accurate you wanna be on selling products, you know, giving, shortchanging somebody or being a little bit long. I just inquired on it because I was asked by these people I purchased it. I didn't really realize it was such a system available to put on a piece of equipment. It's a thirty thirty, I think it says on there, it's capable of remembering thirty different products or different attachments. If you have forks on a bucket, a different bucket. Have it set up for the dirt, sand, recycle, whatever you'd wanna go back into it.
What has been the general feedback when you offer what the pricing is to your folks that you have sold it to?
I don't know. Some people say, oh, that bucket looked a little bit Scotch or whatever, or then the next bucket might be a little fuller. I always say it's on averages. You wanna buy four, it might be a little light, the next one might be a little long. On average, it's probably gonna come out. Usually on small amounts, you know, it's probably not that big a deal. I know you've got inquiries about an outfit that wants to make a pretty good purchase of that pile, you know, it might make quite a difference. I don't know.
My opinion, I'm a gadget guy. I think it looks cool. I'm not sure that if I were spending my money on it, that it's important enough.
Yeah, I just made a draw for information. Like I didn't realize it was available, so I just thought I'd bring it through.
Kind of agree that we don't do enough of stuff like that.
It's not our livelihood, yeah, but I just said I'd bring it forward.
Speaking of that, do, are we, does anybody want to buy that dirty pea gravel we have out there too? Oh, you are? Okay, I see. I didn't know if that pile was being used or not, sure.
Very low. Nobody really inquired. It needs to be mixed, yeah, it needs to be mixed with something. It needs a bonding agent.
I was just gonna ask, so then on that pile, you know, in the past, we said that we're we're not really gonna, I guess, you know, I guess, I guess, like sell, let them chop that pile. Is that still planned in?
Well, I think we've, I think we've agreed that we don't wanna sell. If we wanted to sell the whole thing, it'd be gone already. And I think it's a product, I know Dave and I have talked quite a bit about it, and I've talked to Monty, that it's kind of like a, just a little kind of a savings account. I think it's nice to have there. I know we have a lot. And I know Sebastian's wanted to buy-
They initially wanted four thousand tons.
Four thousand tons, right. I would not, I'd rather not see it go out of town like that to, I'd rather see it be used in our community or- But, you know, initially I said no to the four thousand, but maybe consider, you know, half that, but I don't, it's, I don't know. It's a valuable product that people will come far and wide to get. If you put a for sale sign on that pile, it'll be gone. I just know how long it took to build that pile and what it cost us. I'm not worried about recouping our money however, because we kind of already, you know, even when we used it in that large street project, and we saved three hundred thousand dollars in that project just by using our own product. So, that was huge, hugely valuable for us, so. I don't know, we can always revisit that, and if we think we wanna start selling more, I think we raise the price, if anything else, because it's something that is better than class five, and you just can't, can't get it.
Well, yeah, you know, maybe then, in the price of this, you have a six, six, seven thousand dollars, and we, and we spread that out, you know, I guess, raise up the price of the product, you know, say, well, we're gonna pay for it at first, you know. You know, I guess like three hundred tons, four hundred tons.
Yeah. Yeah, we could recoup it through that, through the sale of that stuff. Have they come back, Monty, by chance? I know they built the score you wrote out there now.
He was weighing the cost between our asphalt pile and just class five gravel.
But at any time, you guys, if you wanna reevaluate that pile, what, what we need for the price that we have, absolutely.
Although, I mean, I would say a longer pile, something in turn, I guess, like hard, we might as well, might as well, I guess, leave it there, you know.
And it does firm up. It's harder.
Yeah, it gets a little harder, but it does break apart. It's gonna settle and the heat, there's a lot of car, and it'll, it'll mop up again, but not rock hard.
Right.
Especially if you have concrete and stuff in there, but it'll be usable for many years.
Okay. Mr. Link?
I don't know if you wanna take a comment on that.
We will.
Just a suggestion on these hydraulic scales on the front end loader. You know, they have, you may be unaware, they have to be calibrated. And so when you calibrate something, you're gonna have the same question of selling a product off a tonne scale on a hydraulic loader. When was the last time that was calibrated? Is that accurately calibrated? Who calibrates it for you? So, they're nice gadgets, but they need constant attention. I mean, they don't go too many months without having to recalibrate it. And the other comment is, yeah, as a resident, paying special assessments, where that asphalt is purchased and that asphalt is removed, paid for by residents, I just assume not to see it go out of town either.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Hey, anybody else? We're still on streets and cemetery. Alright, finance busting. Oh, David. Okay. Police, fire.
Nothing at this time.
Buster, HCD.
Big break tomorrow night, car show as part of the music in the park. Probably remember you voted to close the street down, and our board is actually buying lunch tickets or meal tickets for all of the residents over in Pine Year. So they could enjoy the music, so hopefully it'll be, there'll be a good turnout with the car show being parked out, cars on the streets as well, so. Hopefully a big turnout.
Good, thank you. It's gonna be a fun weekend. And again, I just wanna touch base and thank our fire department, police force, and the city guys for getting things screwed up. Beauty was fantastic. Mother nature help, do they do it? Moving now to eleven A, street striping and marking.
We had that discussion a few, couple meetings ago now regarding the center striping of Main Street. There isn't a whole lot of sentry code to support enforcement or whatever. Basically, making a left turn or where that center lane is allocated to specific traffic. You can make a turn across it so long you're making a left turn or, I don't know how that affects in town when they're just making a left turn or. Again, it's gonna be a matter of enforcement, really is what it comes down to. Because even if there is no striping, you impede somebody by making that left turn, you can be cited.
What is, what is the cost to do the double strip?
Depends, are you doing it only in Main Street, the city proper here, or are you going all the way up past Crowsey's to Highway two hundred again?
I guess I've got to move.
You're probably looking at a couple hundred dollars.
The reason I'm asking the question is that sometimes I feel like if you have the striping there, there's gonna be a number of people that are gonna say, oh, it's a double stripe, I can't go across it. And, you know, just because they, in general, think of a double stripe as something you don't go across. Maybe that deters a few people from making that U-turn that might impede traffic and stuff like that. And if it doesn't cost a whole lot, maybe it doesn't hurt to put it down like that.
Yeah, it's not a huge cost, cost savings to not do that. I think you'll save a lot more by not doing all the curb-
All the radius.
The driveway tips and radiuses.
Okay, so then we get our paint double line?
I just, I just throw it out there. I guess my weight influences me a lot in terms of being a Wolf follower. And every time I see somebody with the U-turn on Main Street, I'm like, ah, look away, look away.
I have no problem putting it down either. It's, it's not the expensive issues. Casey, you know, I guess, I guess back, you know, back when we did have, you know, you know, I did still see, I mean, like people go and turn into it and drive it every way, so I mean-
It's just like a speed limit sign. I see people that try to break past the speed limit sign, clearly not doing it. So, I mean, it doesn't matter what you're doing. You put spikes down, people would probably still do it, and then sue the city for, for that there, so.
Did you wanna still paint curb radiuses? I kinda want to get away from that. All the bigger cities, very few communities do that anymore. Let them wear back natural. I mean, they've been years past. They get so thick, we've been out there with hammer, chisel, and chiseling some of it off. But just let it wear away and go back natural, little driveway tips that we mark on third and fourth. I mean, people know you're not supposed to park in front of somebody's driveway.
I'm in agreement with that. I think that's more intuitive, that you just don't park in front of somebody's driveway.
And continue painting the yellow where you don't want any parking, but as far as doing the radius, it's just kind of let that all wear away and, you know.
Does anybody else have an opinion on double lines?
I don't see a reason for it, 'cause right now people are crossing it, and they're not looking at it. I would put a broken line down in the center. I can't see why you would have a double yellow, but it's an opinion of mine. It doesn't bother me either way, because people are still gonna drive over it.
So you're suggesting, if you're gonna put lines down, just put a jacket or a broken line?
Yeah. Well, and nobody passes on Main Street anyhow, do they? Do we ever have, yeah, you don't put the passing, yeah.
Passes on Main Street?
Sometimes you want to. Sometimes they want to, but either way, it doesn't matter to me, because people are still gonna drive over it.
I guess my contention would be if you're gonna put one with gaps in between, do not just go ahead and put a double on, you might-
A little bit.
It doesn't bother me either way.
When do you get, when do you do the painting again? Is that more towards fall?
I always gotta do it at the fall.
Crosswalks and things?
That's the biggest thing that needs to be painted this year, the parking stripes and a lot of the yellow looks actually really good. It's mainly the crosswalks need it, along with some of the handicap.
We got many snowblades, one of those, paint that.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we can scrape a bunch of it off this year. There's entire, entire cracks on the crosswalks. Wear that away though.
We need a motion or just a direction.
Let's move.
If you know what you're doing.
Paint double lines down the-
I could see the double line in the main business district, but maybe not all the way out to two hundred, I mean, once you get past the welding shop, I mean, that's-
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good. That's a tough decision. Mr. Link, did I see you shaking? Mr. Link, did I see you shaking your head?
I, I would say if you're gonna paint any lines down Main Street, paint the double line to deter that left-hand turn across traffic. Uh, and I like the idea of not painting all these yellow curbs, 'cause the pink, I have looked at them for years and it's getting to be a quarter inch thick. And, uh, there's very, now, I don't.
Do that anymore?
I don't know if that serves a great purpose. I think painting the double stripe down at the center of Main Street would serve a, a better safety.
I agree. Thank you. There's your direction.
Yeah. Could've said better one.
Moving on to twelve A, uh, new business. Grounds improvement, library. Casey?
That's the library, in between the sidewalk. On the north end of the, of the, uh, the library there, between the building, it's all kinds of shrubs and stuff, you know, weed and stuff. So, so I guess they would then, uh, pour a slab, they couldn't quite be the whole way, it's gonna have like a curb part and the northwest. Northwest corner there. But then it'll be also, I guess, a stamped area, you know, decorative. And the bid that's up here is also for a new, I guess, sidewalk. And, uh, yeah, it's like four yards or something, or three point some, yeah, four point one eight.
Yeah, four point one eight.
Yeah. So I guess Cindy, she didn't really, really want that, I guess, a change of anyway, but so I guess we would like to leave in the sidewalk and just, just tear out, uh, all the shrubs and stuff in the grass there, leave the stamped on the pole. It doesn't, I guess, split out, you know, it's a sidewalk, but. It's gonna try to get it.
Yeah, I guess basically all you can do is subtract three hundred and forty square feet off of their payment, whatever they were charging.
Yeah.
'Cause that boulevard sidewalk really doesn't need to be replaced, there is no real issue with it, they need it or anything like that.
I think so, yeah.
So would there still be areas where they would have plantings and stuff like that? You, you talked about curb in the northwest.
Yeah, I don't know.
So everything would basically be finished off and it would be dyed and stamped?
Yeah.
For the most part? Okay.
And then two, you know, I guess, like part of the reason is, I guess, of the drainage too.
Sure. Absolutely.
On that building. It's got almost.
So be, with the sidewalk, give us sixteen thousand.
Yep.
Where's, where's that? What is their budget? What do they have for monies?
Their budget, part of this would be, oh, she said part of this would be twenty twenty two, I'm sorry, I didn't.
They were gonna try to get a grant, but it concerned that one went through.
Yeah, I wanna say she had less than ten thousand in her budget yet for this year. Obviously, we don't have the twenty-two budget done yet, so, but she was just wondering if there were funds available in the city, and we do have some for government buildings and grounds. We have a little over twenty thousand left in our budget for buildings and grounds, so she was just wondering if the city would consider sharing some of these costs. No specific amount she was looking for, but.
Who's, who's responsible for all of those shrubs and keeping them nice and all that kind of stuff? Is that, is that your, your folks?
Yeah, Mike has been over and ran through some of them, which is a price maintained some of that.
So there's, there's opportunity to offset some of those costs, if you will. It's not really the cost you're offsetting, but they can use that time elsewhere within the city. Sure. So what would, if you were making a motion, is this some, a, a two-year project to take advantage of funding in the, in the couple of years, or do it all at one time, I would assume?
Yeah.
And then, and then the city would supplement it out of?
Not in part, general.
General.
General buildings and grounds.
Yeah, okay.
Even if one's trying to get, I guess, uh.
Yeah, remove that part and get.
They're new bids, yeah. So, should have followed them, but, so it's still gonna be in that twelve thousand range, probably?
Twelve, thirteen.
Okay, so are we gonna get multiple bids then? We only have one here.
It's not required, but.
Okay.
Who's, who's looking to do that?
Like River Premier Builders.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know who they are, I don't.
Reason I'm asking that question is, I know that the Bureau of Golf Course did, just did some, uh, some dyed and stamped areas over around their clubhouse over there, a group out of, a little bit further out west there, I don't remember if they're from Zach or Golden Valley or some, Zap or Golden Valley, someplace out there, and they said that they did a very, very reasonable job. And so when you talk about, you know, if you're gonna go up for bids, um, that might not be a bad idea.
But you're hitting on the quote, yeah.
They, they did it very timely and, and household, very reasonable, so.
Yeah, I, I'd consider helping, I don't, don't have any issue with that, but I'd like to see maybe we get more competitive. Okay?
If you're gonna go back to the drawing board and take out the sidewalks anyway, it may be worthwhile.
Same. Anything else?
No.
Thanks. All right, air conditioning, uh, install fire, fire hall.
So didn't bring this up the last meeting, forgot about it. Monty, I mean, I guess I'm not sure, are they replacing or?
No, it is actually, they don't have an air conditioner in.
That's what I saw, but, yeah. They want an air conditioner in the building, yeah.
So they, they currently have forced air propane heat over there, is that right? So this would just be adding a, a coil on a condenser and stuff in there?
Is there a bid at all or anything?
Like he's got, yeah, he sent it to us.
Yeah, they, they got a quote from Legendary.
And it looks like they want the single, silver single zone installation.
Something like that, yeah.
From, they got a bid from Legendary. It looks like it's forty-four hundred dollars.
And they had several different levels.
Yeah, there are different levels on here, but that's the one that they sealed out, it looks like?
Yes.
Yeah.
I know when I had that, that portfolio, just anticipating questions that might come up with, why in the world do they need air conditioning in there? You know, they just respond to when, uh, they get paged to go put out fires, but I can attest to the fact that their training room is used extensively there, uh, when they're going in there for certification, recertification, all of that type of stuff. And I know having just spent some time up at the high school, not air conditioned in preparation for this all-school reunion, it's, it gets pretty taxing when you, particularly if you're in an environment where you're trying to learn something, absorb something, so.
I would make a motion to, uh, purchase this air conditioning unit for forty-four hundred dollars.
Okay, motion by Wolf.
I'll second that.
Second by Miller, discussion. Casey? So then is this also, I guess, heater than two, to heat?
It does have a heat pump as well, yeah.
So do you know that this package here, is it replacing their, their existing furnace?
I couldn't tell you. I would not.
Think the fire hall, that's all electric.
Well, that's what I was wondering, I thought.
That's on the truck bay, that's the hanging electric heater.
Resner's tech heaters?
Yeah, it's all electric, yeah, it's all electric heater there.
Their baseboards in the office, don't they?
In the kitchen.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all electric baseboard over there.
Okay.
So this would be.
So this would be the whole deal. Does it call a duct work or anything then?
This doesn't include the electrician either. On the last page, you can see that they note specifically.
The electrician will, it looks like it will add one to two thousand dollars depending on the electrician.
Nancy, would you have either Matt or Corey come in next meeting?
Yes.
Just give us a little bit more of a rundown of it?
Yep.
That sound good?
Do you have postponing action on your motion?
Yes.
Let's get a little more thorough picture of what we're doing. Been this long without it, I think we'll do it in a couple more weeks.
Okay.
It'll get us past some hot days.
Still got August. Okay, down to, uh, C, Gator purchased street department.
This would be a Gator mainly for the spraying, would handle up to a ninety gallon spraying tank and equipment. Would have a cab, so that when there is that slight breeze, you're not having to worry about which direction you're going or, or any of that stuff. Uh, Dave did get this pricing through their government contract stuff. Total is twenty-three thousand, three hundred eleven thirty-five. This would not include any trade-in of either of the two old Gators we have, one of them is basically gonna be parts for.
It's, yeah, they're getting ready to hire, they are.
They, they sort of do it as they will.
There is slightly over thirty thousand dollars in this current year's budget for equipment, not that we have to use it, but it is there.
I know Jason talked to me, he's in favor of it, but he's not here.
I would make the motion to purchase this Gator.
Make motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion.
So as I read the notes, uh, that this one's gonna have, I guess, a cab on, so a cab, the hard doors, the old long windows, heated air condition. So, if an attack, but would need to be put on, whether Monta does have a heater.
So when you're dreaming and thinking about this with the cab and all of that kind of stuff, what are, what are some of the additional functions that you would be looking to use this for versus what we deal with just our, seemingly as our summer gear?
We'd use it to pull, uh, the trailer and stuff, um, for like painting, we're using the current Gators, but if you put the painter on that one trailer and it outweighs the old Gators, I mean, it's gonna handle a little better. It'll actually, we'd use it to pull that black utility trailer for you to put the other long doors on, to go run it all going. And it's eventually, if I wanted a snow pal, could be added for winter for bike path instead of the bobcat, it's four-wheel drive. And then it's whatever guys wanna use it for, and the other Gator is strictly just summertime use.
And they are, they are, it's time.
It's, it's time, yeah.
I just, I just wanted noted for, for the public, and it's a big chunk of change.
Yeah, it is.
And throw my cab on there with heat and air conditioning and stuff like that, I would wanna know if my tax money's going for that, uh.
Especially spraying like the highway ditches, when you're spraying a whatever semi or big, picked up a cap that goes by you, the heat left, just leaving this landing on you, and the chemical designed to kill things, that, that's what I was saying. I mean, when you're, you're spraying, you're, you're wearing some of that mist or whatever.
Yep.
I mean, you've got eighty, ninety degree day, you're gonna wear so many coat clothes, rubber boots or whatever, and it has a safety deal with the spray and stuff.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second, anywhere discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wolf and Howard.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. D, Christmas light replacement quote, these things aren't cheap either.
No, they're not, uh, there are a few of them, we're not down to them, but there are a few that are getting pretty broken up, just taking them off and on every year. They do get some wear and tear of, they did quote three of them, oops, get to the right quote. They did quote three of each of these two different styles that I have found. Or where they did quote two of them as well, basically the pricing was the same for two or three, or if you wanted to start small and do one, we can try and give pricing for one.
So the quote is for six of them, correct?
Six or four, yeah. The twenty-seven hundred is for six, the eighteen sixty-seven is for four of them.
These are to match the general design of the.
Yeah. They are pulling off the same as all of that ones.
So plug in the fire.
Plug in the fire.
Yeah. Yeah, LED bulbs.
I gotta say Scott does a really good job of maintaining and taking care of our Christmas ornaments, he's, uh, he's kind of the city Santa Claus when it's back over.
Make a motion to accept the quote as presented.
For six?
For six.
Make motion by Miller. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Miller.
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wolf and Howard.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. E, twenty twenty-two budget, it's coming to be that time.
Just on your radar, well, schedule a meeting, go through line by line, or if you got a date in mind already. Budget has to be to the county auditor by the tenth of the month of August, so I was hoping that we'd be able to approve the preliminary at the August second meeting. So I guess if there's any time in the last two weeks after the nineteenth that you wanna sit down and go through line by line, you sure can, I am still putting some preliminary numbers in there, but. And I am putting a three percent cost of living increase in, for the first, first round.
Is it cutting it too close Tuesday, the twenty-seventh?
Nope.
There's an HCD meeting that occurs at five fifteen, we're typically done by six fifteen.
What's the date, yeah?
Oh, yeah, that's Tu- Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. We're, we're doing them now on.
The twentieth, ours will be.
Okay.
July twentieth, I'm sorry, HCD.
Okay, I'm gonna stick with that date and delete that thing off my calendar. Is that for everybody else?
The twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven?
So far.
I think so. I don't see you.
Oh.
I'll be up at the fair.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, not the whole week, but I mean, I'll be gone the week after Tuesday.
I'll be, I'm leaving a, with a group of kids to DC on the twenty-eighth. Is that Wednesday, twenty eighth?
Yeah.
Yeah. For eight days.
On the twenty-sixth? Twenty-sixth?
That is our view of DC.
Yeah. Or there is the fair.
I'm supposed to race on the twenty-sixth, so yeah, that one will probably, but if you guys wanna meet, I can get you.
Well, I, I say the more the merrier for this, this meeting, so I would prefer if we could all be. So the previous.
The week before then, Fargo for like four days.
Yeah, that one's tough too, I guess.
Well, that or, we could always meet after, um, do it as part of the regular meeting if you guys have, just have suggestions, I'll get the preliminary out to you and.
What, what's the date of the?
Monday, the nineteenth, we have a meeting.
Monday, the nineteenth, we have a meeting, or we can do it August second.
I'll still be gone on the second.
Okay.
How about Monday, the nineteenth, we do a marathon? How about Monday, the nineteenth, we do a marathon meeting? Get together a, after your regular meeting. Go over to Jimmy's and.
Jimmy?
Yeah, or go to Jimmy's or bring Jimmy's here, one or the other.
Something like that? Okay.
Okay, nineteen, August?
July.
It's for August tenth, we have it. July.
I can give Dan notice right away too, Mr. Orange.
I made, that'd be. That's, that's the code, I've got, yeah, but the nineteenth may not work. I'll go check, like, you know, tomorrow, Monty.
Okay. So long as, as I say, if everybody can give me some possible dates, we'll see which ones work for the majority, set it from there. We're supposed to notice.
All right, I'll call you tomorrow for that. All right, F, outstanding utility account cancellation for the forty-nine dollars, sixty-six cents.
Make a motion to just cover it.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion.
I guess for purposes of the, the records, this is for a citizen that was deceased and there was not a level of funding left in the estate to cover the expense of the outstanding bills. So this would just be the city putting forgiveness on the signal, correct?
Forty-nine sixty-six cents.
Forty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Was this the, I guess, is this the, I guess, of the property owner then, or is this the record?
Oh, this was the property.
I know, okay. So then of the property, where does that go, I guess?
That will all be handled through the estate.
Probate or whatever?
Yeah.
So I mean, are we gonna be able to claim? Claim a lien on that or something?
On specials, try to put out specials for the property?
Well, some, uh.
I think our best bet would be to put it on the specials, but there again, what's gonna happen when that goes through probate, I was. And if there is no probate, the property will be.
But you could still submit a claim against the estate. But you shouldn't get a special, special, some property.
Is this the first time we've ever experienced this?
If there's no money, it won't be good.
Do we have a precedence? We, we, the past ones, we've always just canceled the outstanding.
Is this a resident owner or just a resident?
Owner, owner. He owned the property. Yes. But it does beg the question, because most, most of the properties in town are gonna have, I would say, significant specials in place, so that's a whole different discussion then with regard to outstanding specials on the property? Well, whoever ended up with the property would. Okay. End up with the special. Got it. So the, the, the specials would transfer with the property? But you're saying we have precedence in that, in general, this type of situation, we've just forgiven? Yeah, we've just canceled the. Okay.
But if it was like five or six hundred dollars, we probably wouldn't want to forgive that. I mean, at some point.
Makes sense to me. I'll, I'll stick with my motion for forty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Okay, we have motion and we have a second. More discussion. Roll call.
Pillar?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Hold on.
Hi, carried. Prove the bills. Motion by Wolf, second, second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf?
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Pillar?
Hi.
Hold on.
Hi, motion carried. Any adjournments?